Also here are Nancy Thurlo, Crystal DeGrasse, Mark Gauss, and we are being helped by Josh in the central office helping us with the streaming. Okay, so has everyone had a chance to go over the minutes from the previous meeting?
I did, and I'll make a motion to accept as written.
Marissa Rosinsky is making a motion to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Richie Davis is a second. All those in favor, say, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All votes in favor, minutes accepted. And then on to the principals' report.
Just want to make sure we say also, I'm just going to put nothing in public comment, right? Nothing came in, Mark?
No, yeah.
I apologize. Yes, I'm not aware of any public comment at this time. Thank you.
I forgot that we are supposed to mention that because during these Zoom meetings, if you're watching through YouTube, we do take public comment, and if it comes in before time, it is mentioned during the meeting. But if it comes in during the meeting or after, it will be taken care of in the next minutes for the next meeting. And then so back to you, Crystal, sorry.
Thanks. No, that's good. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. So I did submit my principals' report. I think the biggest pieces I'll share are more maintenance-wise on that side. We have received our new school bus, which is awesome. When it came in, it did not have winter tires, which was not awesome. So we did have a bus that was purchased. It was the eighty-three thousand three hundred that we planned. But we did have to put thirteen hundred, and you'll see that in the voucher, for them to do all-season mud and snow tires, which we can still use the tires that were on the bus, but for the winter months and those really muddy days, the mud and season tire, the mud and snow tires are much better. So now we will have that second set they've already been put on. And so we already got that down to Augusta and back. So we officially have a school bus on the island that hopefully will not have to leave for a long time, unless we go on a field trip with our kids. And we have a couple of big projects that we've talked about that are now kind of underway. We have coastal builders coming out, and they're going to be giving us a quote on the front of that gym roof. We're due for that to be repaired, replaced. That will be the last roof of the building that needed to get done. So I'm hoping to get that quote, and then Nancy and I will work up a bid process to accept bids for that. And Reed's is still working on all of our CRF features that they're still working on installing the washer and dryer, those touchless faucets. Partially, those things have been installed, but there's still some touch-up items that need to be done. And our water fountain, we will have a new one with the touchless bottle pour in the gymnasium, just like in the hallway. And so those are some big things for us that I think we've been working hard to get finished. And it's pretty exciting to see the changes around the building. The kids thinks it's great. They walk around all day being like, I didn't touch that. I didn't touch that. And they got soap and paper towel dispensers, and they're feeling pretty fancy at the school, I would say, which I think is a nice thing for them with so many other things that are negative. It's nice to look at the positives, which have been some really big updates to our school, including some work to our heating system, which is, you know, definitely needed. So I'm very grateful for the way we were able to use CRF. And Nancy gave us some fantastic news recently, which was that the CRF money has been extended through June. So any of the money that was not fully spent, which is not very much for us, so don't get excited that we're going to get anything new. It's only for what we already had planned and budgeted for, but that we are able to do those finish-up projects. And because of that, we had talked about how Caitlin Trachten was helping us with the additional after-school cleaning hours. And she had not utilized all of the funds that I had set aside in the short window of end of November through December. And so Nancy and I will work to find out what funds are available. And hopefully, that cleaning support will continue a little bit longer to get us through at least these first few months of the new year when we know flu is the highest and COVID is still here. So I'm looking forward to having her continue to work with us. She's been fantastic to helping us with the night cleaning.
What are some of the projects that are still not finished?
So we have the washer and dryer in the building, but there is a lot of work to be done. You need an electrician and a plumber and a maintenance person. And I don't have someone that has three hats to do it. So we have to get both hot and cold water lines hooked up. And so that's where Reed's is going to work on that. We still have to get an electrician out because the plug, though it's similar to the plug that we use for the kiln, which was already installed in the art room, which would have been fantastic, was like a difference in wattage, not a huge difference, but enough that we couldn't use it. So we have to get a special plug put in for the washer and dryer combo. And then we have to still vent out through the exterior wall for the dryer. So we got everything designed. We just need people to come out and do those three projects for us. And that's always a challenge out on Swan's Island. And that's outside of my skill set. So though I can paint and fix toilets and do a lot of things, I will not even attempt to do any of those things.
Nancy said she'd come out and do it.
Yeah, and then we have the paper towel and soap dispensers that are all touchless, but the faucets that were sent out had, they have everything that they need in the building, but the plate, where you install them, we had, I think it was like an eight-inch plate initially, and they sent us a four-inch plate. So they're not going to fully install the faucets until the plate is the right size. Otherwise, we're going to have a small plate with two holes on both sides of the plate. And I said, no, if we're going to do it, let's do it right and make it look good. So we're just waiting for plates to actually install the faucets, but all the parts are at the school.
Crystal, I just have a question for anyone that might be listening is, under the CRF guidelines, was in COVID, or why did they feel it was necessary to have a washer dryer in the school, just for folks that might be asking?
Yeah, that's a great question. So for so many reasons, COVID-related, we've changed our cleaning supplies and cleaning protocol. And so a big part of that is obviously we have a lot of waste with paper towel. If you're completely, if you're cleaning all the time with paper towel, it's just a lot, a lot of paper waste. And we're trying to be friendly to the environment as well. So we've gone to cloth rags. And so instead of having our custodian taking those home and cleaning them in her own washer and dryer, it's much nicer to do it there. We can also reuse our mop heads and not change them out as often if you can clean them. And you could do that as well, depending on the kinds you use. And then our biggest thing is we've got kids that not only soil clothes for the reasons we know they soil clothes, but also because they go outside and they get completely soaked. And it's the only pair of snow pants they have, or the only pair of mittens that they have. And that's a good thing for us to wash. And finally, we brought it because with COVID, we don't know how long these masks are going to be here. And it's nice, because not every family can wash them or launder them every single night. We can always make sure that anything that's used at the school can be washed for the kids and dried or hung, and then put back into student areas so that they have a fresh set every single day of cloth masks, which right now we have plenty of disposable ones. But at some point, if that isn't the case, it's nice to have the ability to be able to wash and dry masks as well. So multiple reasons, but those I think are the biggest ones related to COVID.
Well, I'm glad you explained it. I know that we have this issue with the firehouse. I don't think people are aware that, you know, that it is a problem with, if you don't want people bringing things home. Currently, we don't have a washer and dryer at the thing, so there's a possibility that you're bringing blankets home. So I'm really glad. I just wanted people to know that there's very valid reasons, and thank you for explaining it so well. Is there anything?
We've got to get Marissa and Mark together so that we can see more than Marissa's notes. Sorry, Richie. I'm managing two screens here. I apologize. There we go.
There you go.
I want Marissa's ability to have the background. You could teach me that, Marissa, to have your background. Be good.
I just don't know how to make my hair wave in the background like Marissa's. It's...
So Crystal, is that it for your reports, or?
That's it, right. There are some other items that I put in the report for you if you want to go back and read them. But those are the big highlights of it. And I'm sure you'll hear enough for me tonight. As we get into the budget, you'll hear my voice a plenty.
Okay, so then on to Mark with the AOS board updates.
Um, let's see, we have a, we have a meeting coming up on Monday for the budget. So that's important. We, we get the warrant posted. We have a policy committee meeting coming up on Thursday. That is remote. If anybody'd like to participate. Where, there's no outstanding issues. We're, we're working through our existing policies and looking at policies that we don't have that, that might be recommended. So that, that process is going to take the next several months of review before. Uh, let me see. I don't know if there's any questions about remote status or any activities. I'm happy to take any questions. We're still continuing to, I guess, you know, I'll just shout out to our teachers, our kids, and our communities for being patient. We know COVID's really, really hard. We're all doing the, the very best we can. And it literally is day-to-day in our schools like it is in our, our family lives. So I couldn't be prouder of people, but I, I'm happy to take any questions, Tammy. I don't know if there's anything else that I've left out, or seems like, you know, things these days drift together. So it's, it's hard sometimes to differentiate, but there's a lot going on. Rest assured.
It's very, it's, it's great that, you know, one of the things that with the AOS and being Zoom meetings, like we're doing Zoom tonight, unfortunately, when I was trying to join the Zoom meeting last time, I could, it kept breaking up. And but I could still hear enough that even though they couldn't hear me and I couldn't vote, so if you see it and you don't see me, I was able to hear what was going on. And to be updated, you know, and knowing that we're doing it the best we can in very trying times, trying to keep our teachers supported and our parents and community, you know, we have never experienced anything like this. And the tremendous amount of sport, support that we have as a board, you know, showing that we care and that we're trying to do everything we can to keep kids and teachers and the whole community together and moving forward. You know, it's, it's hard to move forward during these times, but I think that our local boards and the AOS board are doing the best that we can.
Yeah. I miss it. I just miss the kids and I miss the people. And, you know, we're, we're making headway here. But it's still going to be a, a long journey for all of us.
So I do not have any items for discussion unless you have some that you've added, Mark?
I, I don't, um, I, I think the only thing, I don't see it, but, um, you know, just, just to make sure the board and the public's aware. I'm proud of Crystal for, you know, networking on the eighth grade trip piece, keeping the board informed there, working with parents. And so that, that's, that's good progress. And just as an extension, we're going to have some conversations among all of our principals just to make sure that we have some continuity and make sure we can continue to support these activities for our kids. No, I think the only thing, the big, the big question of the hour is just budgeting. And I guess, just, you know, before we go into that, I'd just say that we are very, very conscious of the, of the times we're in. You know, we've always taken a very conservative yet supportive approach to kids and requests. And, you know, I, I couldn't be prouder, again, going into this, the, the recommendations of the work Crystal's done and Nancy. You know, yet, yet I would just say from where I sit at my vantage point with the eleven boards I report to, some communities would envy the position you're in right now financially. You've done a really good job. You can be proud of where you're at, in my opinion. Thank you.
Just want to thank Crystal for making sure that we have printed copies, even though we have technology to look at them on the screen. Having the two written copies, your printed copies for each of us and for Emmy for rescuing me and getting them delivered so that we can look at them. So I'm going to pass it over to Crystal, Mark, and Nancy, the perfect trio that help us get our budget underway. And as we go through the two options that we are looking at for this evening.
So Nancy's going to, Nancy's going to kick us off, but just to...
Okay, Nancy's going to kick us off. Okay, there we go.
Well, just to make sure you know, in your, in your folders, there's two sides. So on the left side, you have option A, and on the right side, you have option B. Nancy's going to go over the top part, which is the same on both of the first page. And there was a slight change to appropriations, which Nancy, if you could just let them know that, they do not have the new copy, but it doesn't change the bottom-line number. And so if you could start by explaining that and then go with the carryforward, and then I'll go through the rest of the budget, that would be great.
Nancy, when you get to the carryforward piece too, because we've done this, I think it's really important. The board may know this, but to really talk about that number and how we've arrived at that number right now, given the situation we're in. It's not something that happens each and every year. Thanks.
No. Okay, well, the, the one that I sent to you, Crystal, I realized, Nancy forgot to print out one for herself, so...
I can tell you that I have it in my screen right now.
You, what happened was I didn't have, if you look on your copies, the, the decrease per hundred thousand that it's in yellow on the, the ones that you have. And I didn't have the tax rate calculation sheet from the town yet, and I got it today, so I updated it. And usually, it doesn't make much difference. It's usually cents, but it was a dollar or two more that it would, like it was a negative twenty instead of negative eighteen because of the way the, the state valuation changed quite a bit and the appropriations in the mill rate changed. So it, it made just a little bit more difference, but I can't tell you exactly what they are, Crystal can, but they're just, just a dollar or two difference. But it's in the, to the good of, you know, for you guys. I think I left them maybe in the printer in the other room at work. So the carryover, you'll see anticipated for, for starting this year, we're anticipating four-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars. And a lot of why we had that is COVID-related. You know, we did pay people, but there were a lot of things like subs you didn't have because you weren't in school. You didn't have, you know, different programs. And of course, your, also your budget has that other piece too with tuition and room and board that actually some of that didn't happen for the room and board, obviously. And also when we, I mean, we're doing, like, we're doing this now in January. We did that last year, so we're anticipating how many kids we have right now for, like, tuition. But we usually say, okay, we're going to put one more in just in case somebody moves on the island. And then if that doesn't happen, then that adds to that carryover. So there were a lot of COVID-related reasons why that carryover. And a lot of the schools, there were a lot of different changes in personnel. I mean, you don't, you haven't had that really. But it, you know, a lot of reasons why that fluctuates somewhat, but this year basically is COVID. And if we look at going into next year, we have a figure of two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-one-fifty-five. Now, that, what it is, is taking our anticipated revenues and then subtracting the anticipated expenditures, because Crystal and I will go through, you know, we're sitting here with our crystal balls and saying, okay, you know, it looks like we're going to spend this, this, and this in these different accounts. And of course, we always err on the sign, side of conserving conservation of the, on the high side, I should say, of expenditures, just so you don't get caught short on any items or anything. So hopefully, you know, you'll, you may even, you'll come out with even more maybe starting next year, depending on how this year works out. Plus, we've had the CRF monies, even though you can't supplant your budget, it's a supplement to it. It still did pay for stuff that you normally, you know, that you may have down the road purchased or something, but wasn't in your budget last this year. So that kind of contributes to that carryover. And out of the carryover, what I did was look at your town appropriation and look at saving some, because if we don't, if we use all of the carryover this year, you're not going to have that kind of carryover going into another year. And so we need to kind of put a little savings account out there. So I put seventy-five thousand aside, kind of, and not, and didn't use it to help offset the budget. So that kind of will help in next year, the, once we go through, you know, for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year. That will help in that year and beyond, because there are, they're anticipating there's probably going to be less state subsidy. A lot of the grants seem to be, even though we got the extra ones because of COVID, the regular grants seem to be dwindling each year. So that's something that you kind of, you need to have some money to offset some of those other costs that are going to happen, or fewer revenues down the road. And speaking of revenues, the state subsidy, we just got a preliminary printouts. And I had estimated about seventy-five thousand. Now, the, the amount that the prelim we got from the state is just that, a preliminary look. And they, because yours basically is just reimbursement for special ed costs. That's the only type of subsidy that you get. And that's now at a fifty percent rate of eligible special ed costs. So they came in with a prelim of around eighty-nine thousand. But I'm suggesting, especially given your situation, that you don't increase that projection. And if we do get that high amount, then it always will help your, your, it will go into your carryover and help twenty-two, twenty-three and down the road. So it's, we have gotten caught before from the state after the preliminary amount is set. So I would rather err on the side of being safe on that also.
If I could, Tammy, we don't see it here very often, but for, in our district, but for school districts or schools that are heavy receivers of state funding. In my previous position, we literally saw million-dollar swings in our revenue. And that can cripple a school department. Generally, the first things to go are people in positions. You can't make up that kind of money with supplies and things of that nature. So I think, you know, the, what Nancy has done or suggested is, is really a thoughtful approach. It avoids the cliff. And the other piece is, if there was ever going to be a time, and I hope it doesn't happen, where we really need to be cautious around funds that we do receive for, for subsidy, this is it. Because I believe this fiscal year and the next, at least the next one after that, possibly the one after that, are going to be very, very challenging times for our country, our state. And so we, I, I think the conservative approach is warranted.
I think that we've always followed Nancy's guidelines because it is stood us in good stead. You know, we've, there's times when we didn't know enough, basically, to, to be, to follow those guidelines and put things away and be conservative, and we got caught, you know. So now I think we all have learned that this is a much better approach to, to be safer, to think that we're getting less to learn, to put money aside is very prudent. And I think all of my board members agree with that, that we, we have to be cautious because we just don't know. Especially with COVID, we don't know what's going to happen.
The other, the other thing I want to add, you know, I think it's important for the public to know too. Our school's in great shape. That school's a lovely school. It's in, it's in, it's in very good shape. Our kids have the learning materials that they need. Our staff is supported. So this is not a nickel-and-dime approach. This is not doing without. We're incredibly blessed with the support we receive from the community. So I, I, I couldn't envision a better scenario than the one you're in right now, and I think we're very fortunate. Thanks.
So, yes, and, you know, we're, we're sitting here. We're looking towards June, I mean, that next budget ends June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. We're trying to project everything ahead, so we want to be cautious on both sides. So that's just prudent, I believe. Now, Crystal, do you want me to go with the town appropriation, or do you want to start the budget?
Well, why don't I just do a little bit of both?
Okay.
So in the budget, you'll see, let's start with your option A, which I think is what we came out of last meeting with you asking me to create option A with Nancy. So we'll start with A, and we can go back to B as we need it. But both first pages of A and B, there, you're going to see the same number at the top. So you're looking at the numbers that are in the yellow. It should be yellow. It says the decrease for the hundred thousand valuation. So on the budget, you're going to see, you're going to see eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents savings, so a decrease, if we do not add the additional items. What is now projected, which is what we have on my screen, is twenty dollars and ninety-three cents of a decrease if we do not have the additional items, which we'll talk about the additional item again in a minute. With the additional item or including it, you currently see on your paper twelve dollars and twenty-nine cents per hundred thousand. And on the paper that we just received from Nancy, you're going to see a savings of thirteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. But the percentages do not change. It's just the money value that you see change. So your two lines should be a decrease of twenty dollars and ninety-three cents or a decrease of thirteen dollars and seventy-nine cents, and that's where we'll start. If we decide to leave option A and go to option B, I'll do the same thing I just did, and we'll look at option B. But I think where you asked me to go was to stay in option A, so let's start there. And which is a great place to start, because you're still seeing savings of almost two percent, which is a good amount, even including an additional item, which we discussed at our last meeting. So like Mark and Nancy both said, we're in a very good position. And because we were in a good position to still be able to show a decrease in the budget, as well as give back based on the town appreciation, that we did look at putting money aside, additional monies, to go ahead and start that bus garage process that we've talked about. So we have the brand-new bus, and honestly, we don't put enough miles on our buses to truly trade in our bus like other schools within the ten-year window. But because it's not sheltered, and we have the saltwater, and we have that wind, and it's just completely exposed. Our bus can't keep up with the electronical, electronic components, those, and the rust underneath, and just the ability to keep the door open for it to get fresh air. You can't do that without it being enclosed. So that is one reason why we talked about this budget A, having the ability to put money aside. And when I asked Nancy what we can do and how high we can go, obviously, we always go on the side of caution, but we also looked at our current budget and made some tweaks to let us go higher than we had initially anticipated when we spoke. So I'm going to just show you two things in the budget as we go down, which were slightly different from the last presentation of the budget. One of those is, and we talked about the tuition reserve for our high school students, which was set up and had received quite a bit of funding over the last couple of years. One, because we were able to move some money into it last year and make a larger donation into the reserve, and because we've been putting money aside for the last few years. We had talked about not putting money aside in this current budget. And the rationale for that, again, was because it is set up to be a reserve account, but we can think about a cap, because this isn't like a maintenance where all of a sudden we're going to have a hundred thousand dollars we need, or the possibility of a special education, you know, reserve getting pulled for two-hundred thousand dollars within a given school year. This is something we know. It's about thirteen thousand dollars per child. So even if we had a handful of children move into our district of the high school, we have enough in the tuition reserve to take care of multiple students. And because Nancy is so smart, she always not only budgets for those that we know... And because Nancy is so smart, she always not only budgets for those that we know are in our district, but also the plus one. So even in addition to the tuition reserve, there's always a plus one built into every year's budget. So we would always use that plus one before pulling from the reserve. So again, that just keeps that safety net. So, um, when you look at that reserve account, you'll see that it went from, uh, twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars to zero. And so that was changed from what the first budget was that we reviewed together. And you're able to take some of those funds and then apply that to what you'll see will be the fifty-five thousand transfer to the maintenance reserve. And that was one place where we took that money right out of the budget to put it in a different location. So does that make sense that you see that as a zero instead of twelve thousand, which means we're still budgeting a plus one student, plus all the students we anticipate at the school, but we are not putting money this year into our, well, sorry, next year's budget into the tuition reserve? Good to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. And then if you scroll down, uh, or through a couple of pages, you'll get to, um, the reserve accounts for the transfer to maintenance reserve. It should be on your second to last page. And it's under the capital outlay, middle of that page. Just give you a minute to get there. Um, so in the past, uh, definitely depending on what it is we were trying to do, whether it was to build the reserve account or to put money into the reserve account because we knew we had a project to do, um, the money has changed a little bit, but about ten thousand is what we typically would put into that reserve account each year. And this year, we are asking for fifty-five thousand. So that ten thousand was still built in that we wanted to build the reserve, but adding forty-five thousand allows us to really, uh, make a big difference in that reserve account and plan accordingly. So if we were to have a good fiscal year and we could go into our next budget, which would be the twenty-two, twenty-three creation, so next school year as we create the next budget, we would hope to anticipate putting more funds aside for the building project so we could actually complete a bus garage in the summer of twenty-two, twenty-three. So we're putting it away, not planning to use it next summer, planning to use it the summer after when we have the complete amount put aside for the bus garage within our next two budgets. Um, and that's just another good way that, again, we're, we're not asking the community to come up with a huge amount of money. We're not jumping with a increase for the town to pay. We're trying to be really conservative, but also smart. So we can still provide a decrease, but yet put the money aside we need for this future project that we feel is really important. So when you see that fifty-five thousand, just again, remember it's a forty-five thousand dollar increase that did not make us have to actually increase the budget. We were still able to provide the decrease. Um, and then the final piece, um, down at the very end, which is that additional item that we spoke about, um, that's just the difference between whether you want to include the additional item or not to show that decrease, um, in the value. And that is that part-time custodian, and I just want to clarify, um, it is intended that the custodian would have a dual role, um, that it wouldn't just be a custodial position. There would be some maintenance responsibilities built into that part-time position. And the biggest reason being is we had to make major staffing changes, um, to our custodial position, which I feel has been a huge benefit. We knock on wood, I don't even want to say this honestly, but I'm going to say it, so everybody should knock on wood. Um, that we have not had the sickness that we've experienced in the past. When we look at our absences from the previous years and consistently can see Thanksgiving wipes us out and we have nobody in the building and we've got class sizes of two, we just have not seen that. We haven't seen the stomach bug. We haven't seen the flu. I mean, kids are out for appointments and things, but we are not seeing kids out for two weeks at a time with these like lingering coughs. And again, I'm just so, so grateful for what, everything that Mark had said at the beginning as well about our communities are doing a good job. Swan's Island is doing a good job. People are wearing their masks, not only at school, but out in the community. They're keeping their distance. They're doing what's recommended and it's really seems to be paying off. And I think the additional cleaning and sanitizing that's happening when kids are in the building touching everything, um, has just kept that spread of any virus, um, right down to almost nothing. So I am super grateful for that. And I think moving forward, watching that model unfold, I don't see why we would not want to keep a custodian in during the entire school day. So having this additional support will allow us to do the nighttime work that has to happen and then keep also that nighttime work out of our children's eyesight. So if we do have to put up bulletin boards or install hand sanitizing stations or touchless soap dispensers, they take a lot of time, um, to do it and it's, it's disruptive to learning. So we want that to happen some outside of that school day. Um, so I'm really hopeful that, um, with the additional position as well as the money to the maintenance reserve, you're going to really get a good bang for your buck, um, and the town can still see a decrease in the budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you want to look through any of the other lines or if you want me to clarify anything, um. I'm happy to do that.
So Crystal, I just have one question. Um, I was trying to make sure I'm understanding clearly. I know the, the, uh, after-school custody, custodian was, uh, through the special funding. Um, so are we hoping to have that continue through the rest of the school year? Is there a way to make that happen, uh, outside of that funding? You know, because I'm sure that's not enough for the end of the year, but.
Well, Nancy and I are very creative and she knows I come to her very often with these great creative ideas. So, um, we do have CRF funds that are still available and we do plan to utilize those. Um, and we have spoken about that being, uh, ability to spread it out. So maybe instead of coming five days a week for nighttime cleaning, it becomes two days a week and that stretches out the number of weeks that can happen. Um, it can also be used, um, so that it's used during the February vacation or the April vacation for a more deep clean during that break time. Um, but also we can look at just the truly, the custodian hours that are built in. And I think Nancy and I could be creative to find some funds, um, when days aren't used or hours aren't used, um, from the regular custodian. Maybe there's a way we can use some of those. But at this point, we're not planning to use any other hours outside of what's budgeted with CRF. But I think we always, like Nancy told in the beginning, we always look at what our anticipated spending is and we do our best to never exceed that. So if we see there is flexibility, then we might be able to utilize that. But right now, our goal is to use the CRF funds and not to exceed those. Nancy, feel free to jump into if you.
Yeah, there's, there's a little leeway in those CRF funds so that if she understands another line, we can overspend a little bit on and go across categories as long as it was something that was budgeted under the CRF. So we've got a little latitude on that, so.
I'm just thinking.
Creative.
Yeah, I'm just thankful that we were able to have this because of the funding, because it does seem to be a huge difference. I've, I've known that parents have in the community have said that it's, it's not spreading like wildfire. And you know, like sometimes you may have had a child who came to school sick and then touched their desk or touched something else. And so having the daytime cleaning has been a boon, but also having that heavy cleaning at night, I think is, uh, doing a tremendous job of, of keeping everybody as healthy as possible. And I'm glad that there's a little bit of wiggle room still there.
Yeah, and you'll see in my principal report, um, I did mention this, but as Nancy and I review the CRF funds, um, and we look at the actual spending, um, part of what we will do is go back and look at what is still left. So before we give you that final spreadsheet that we talked about, um, we want to make sure that we go through each of those lines. And so if we find that fund is, is available in some way, we will definitely look at reallocating those and using it for the custodial because that seems to be what we would like to see continue more than anything. But until we get those final numbers, um, put together, poor Nancy's had a lot to do. So we're giving her a little breathing room from the CRF for just a minute while she finalizes all of these budgets, but we will come back to it. We have until June, correct Nancy?
Yeah. Yes, you have to spend them by June thirtieth. So you've got, thank goodness, it was originally December thirtieth, so it's great. You've got another six months.
And I'll just, uh, share one thing because I don't hear any other questions. So just noting the difference in case you did not see, the only difference in the option A and the option B was the amount of money put into the maintenance reserve account. So if you do, just take a look at option B, just so you know what is the difference. Everything is exactly the same with the additional item. And again, the only difference is you'll see at the very top right-hand corner, it says with ten K to reserve. And on the option A, it says with fifty-five K to reserve. And that's on your very front page, top right-hand corner. That's the difference. And so when you look at the difference in this, the decrease and the savings per hundred thousand, that's why there's a decrease because option B does not put that money aside for the bus garage where option A does. So my recommendation is, from the school's perspective, is to use option A to provide us the platform to go ahead and anticipate building a bus garage in twenty-two, twenty-three.
Does anyone on the board have any questions with any of the presentation?
If we decide not to build a bus garage, we can still use that fund for any, uh, maintenance or construction on the building, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure it's not just earmarked for one thing only and get it lost.
But, but if I may Richie, um, Tammy, may I?
Yes, you may.
But if it goes into that, it would have to be for what you just stated Richie. We couldn't create a position or, you know, buy a, it would have to be specific to that category. Yes.
But if we had to redo a roof again, we could use it for that or.
Or if you had an emergency, God forbid, with some, a physical part of the plant, yes. That's typical, that's for, um.
Like unforeseen major flooding?
Yeah, and, and anything is possible. I just wanted to make sure and let everybody know that it was, you know, it can be used anywhere in that line if plans change down the road.
Any other questions?
With, correct, with school committee authorization.
Correct.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions regarding the budget?
I'm happy with this.
Emmy?
Yeah, no, I really like it. And I think, you know, because it still looks like quite a substantial savings. So if we are able to set money aside for a future project and nobody feels the pinch, I think this is the year to do it.
Yeah.
So if there are no questions, um, and, uh, Crystal has put forth her recommendation and do I have any motions regarding the budget?
I will make a motion to accept the budget, um, option A in the amount of, hold on.
One million five hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Thank you.
Here's a second, Tammy.
Yes, I'm just, sorry, I was stopped to write. Is there a second?
Second.
Emmy McKay, Emmy Sawyer is given a second. All those in favor, um, I'm going to go through the roll because, uh, some people cannot see. Uh, so just going again, Richie Davis?
Yeah.
Emmy Sawyer?
Yeah.
Marissa Rosinsky?
Yes.
Tammy Tripler? Yes. All votes cast in favor, motion to approve version A of the budget is going to prove.
Thank you very much. Um, good job, Crystal. Thank you, Nancy, and thank you for the support, uh, board members.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you especially to Nancy. She's so patient and kind when she goes through the budget process, even though she goes through so many of them.
I know.
Really lucky to have her.
I am going on the assumption that that number is a little bit different because you have an updated version for what we have, correct?
So the number stays the same for what you approved it for. The appropriation did change at the top, but the number at the end does not change, um, at all because it's just the amount that the town appropriates to the value. Just like that percentage didn't change, but the dollar amount did. But the budget dollar amount did not change.
I think Richie's referencing the earlier conversation that Nancy said that there's a slight adjustment. It doesn't, it's not going to affect the, uh, the end result to the, to the citizens. It's just making sure it's aligned with the data from the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just the decrease per hundred thousand, those ones that are in yellow. That was the only thing that changed. Because if you look at the very last page and you look at the very bottom number that includes the additional item of the maintenance custodial position, that figure at the end, that's the one million five hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. That's your total budget.
Okay.
So we just want to clarify that. So just to clarify that Nancy, you just said that number, the number that we do need to have Marissa approve is the one million five hundred eleven three hundred and twenty-two, not five hundred thousand three twenty-two. It's five eleven, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that's clear that's in the number that's going, yeah.
That was, that was the discrepancy that I heard, so.
Thank you Richie. That was a good catch.
So the budget being set, uh, we need to set a date and time for the school budget meeting, which will follow as our normal, I will follow our annual, our, our regular meeting. Mark?
Uh, Tammy, may, may I just speak a little bit to that before the board do? So obviously, we're, we're living in a pandemic and obviously our school is closed to visitors who are following all these protocols. Um, it, we believe, we discussed this at length, uh, Nancy, uh, Crystal and I. I, I want to be really careful. We don't want to send any mixed messages to anyone. But there really is no other vehicle to pass a budget other than for us to go through the process that we've had, uh, the last several years. Um, over time, at least since I've been superintendent, we've had great support from the community. But I think it's really, um, I, I think it's important to point out, we've had less than fifty people. If that holds true, and I, I say that very carefully, if those numbers were to be consistent, we could in fact hold a budget meeting at the school in the evening with all the protocols in place. They would not be optional. We would require physical distancing, require mask wearing, proper mask wearing at all times. All those things being equal, we could do it. If fifty-one people showed up, we would have to shut it down and reschedule. That's not to drive people away. That's just to make sure that we're really clear. We cannot turn anybody away that wants to, uh, attend, but we're also required to stay under that limit. That's a, that's a governor requirement, a state requirement. That's not school department. So all those things being said, it's, it's hard because we're nervous, not just for Swan's budget meeting, but you know, when we have the AOS and the high school, um, and we're just, we're, we're, we're nervous because if those numbers don't hold as they have in the past, we might have to shut it down and then figure out how to do this. So I guess what I'm saying and Nancy and I and Crystal are recommending to the board is that we do plan for a budget meeting at the school using our COVID protocols and guidelines. Um, just looking forward, I don't know what that means for the town. Um, you know, that I'm told that past meetings have been very, very well attended with more than fifty and that, that could be a game changer, but that's not our domain. I just wanted to point out if people are wondering, well, why are they doing this? That's the, the scenario and that's the situation we're dealing with. All that could change in an instant. I mean, this information changes daily, but as, you know, from where we sit right now, that's the game plan or the recommended game plan and the forecast. Nancy or Crystal, do you guys have anything to add before we turn it over to these guys?
I would just said that we would be sure we could, uh, put extra precautions in place so they can't sanitize sensations. All the PPE would be available at the door. And we would ask to make sure if you did enter that it was kept on, um, the entire time, that physical distancing was in place and that a deep cleaning would take place after a meeting so that there would be, uh, ventilation, properly going through the gymnasium. There'd be one entry point only through the gymnasium, um, the laboratory, the bathrooms would only be used in the gymnasium. So there wouldn't be any other additional, um, bodies inside of our school building. And then again, it's a Tuesday and so the nice feature of that is the building, the gymnasium is not typically used on a Wednesday morning. So just that additional time is given if we hold it on Tuesday night and that deep cleaning could happen after the meeting, just to keep our students and staff safe as well as our community safe. It would be cleaned before the meeting as well.
And in order to, uh, make sure that we're walking our talk, um, I, I do believe it would be appropriate for Crystal to be there as a building principal. She's in there, but, um, and I, I don't want the, the board or the community to take this the wrong way, but I think it would be prudent for Nancy and I to participate remotely. And that would allow for as many possible, uh, attendees from the community to be there. uh attendees from the community to be there, but we'd be available to answer questions and, and go through that. So Nancy, do you have anything else to add or do you have a date to recommend for their consideration?
Actually, I think your next meeting is, would be February twenty-third. And what we did before, I believe, is you had your school board meeting, say at five o'clock, and then that way you could have the public budget meeting at six, starting at six o'clock. And I will, um once, now that we've passed a budget, I will get the warrant uh ready and I'll ship it out to Crystal and, and you, you guys will have to sign it and then we'll post it. So, but we've got time.
To just do a mailbox delivery, check off.
Tammy, if it's not um inconvenient for the board to, um you know, if we could start the school committee meeting earlier that evening, and that, I think that would, that would help too.
So earlier than five, are you talking or?
No, no, five, we usually have our meetings like we're having now, like at six or so, but for that, for the purpose of that meeting and the, and the budget meeting, if we could do the school committee meeting at five and then the budget meeting to follow, I think that would be, that would be consistent with past years and that would work out well.
Yes, um I'm glad that you mentioned still having the remote access. Uh I think that uh that was the question I had is like, even if we're doing in person, can we still have the remote access for people? Uh and, but the only thing is, is that that would be like with tonight's meeting, if they have questions that they really want to ask, then they could opt to be in person, but maybe they can make an agreement with like someone in their family, like I'll go, you stay and, and watch it um so that we can make sure we get the word out that uh it is an option. Um but that we are trying to limit, including the number of board and Crystal uh being present, that we have to keep it under fifty.
And I think it's important if people do, you know, to get this out, but if people have questions, we want to answer questions, you know, right away. So if people have them, that, you know, we can get the information out very soon.
Richie?
I'll go on record as before Marissa does, to volunteer, if we get to fifty-one, I'll go home early.
What a guy, Richie. You're, you're a great guy. Richie, Richie just gets an award for being a board member and look at that, huh? Isn't he stellar?
Okay, so if uh if everyone is agreeable, we will have our regular school board meeting on, at five o'clock on February the twenty-third and um be followed by the annual budget meeting. Uh I'm assuming that both meetings will take place in the gym to keep everyone as safe as possible. Um
We're gonna work, Tammy, we're gonna work it, uh obviously, we're gonna televise the school board meeting, but I'll work with Crystal to see what we can do to get this out to the public for viewing purposes for the uh budget meeting as well.
Okay, thank you so much and thanks, Josh, ahead of time.
What time is the actual budget meeting? Is it seven or is it gonna be six?
It's six. In the past, it was seven, but then it runs quite late. Um we have actually done our meeting as early as four-thirty because, because we ate. We brought, we brought something to eat and ate. Um you know, because it does run late. Um it all depends on, you know, who's there, on how, you know, uh I expect maybe emotions will be higher this year because uh it's a tough year. Everybody's had a tough year and uh as long as we can get, be very honest and open with the expenditures and, you know, we've been blessed to have the CRS money to help us out with some of the, the costs. Um hopefully it will go as smoothly as possible and not be a very late night, but I think it's very prudent, Mark, that you are on the other side. Um to keep yourself as safe as possible and then um have Crystal be with us in the building. But you're, you'll still be accessible for questions, so that's the most important part.
And I just like to add.
It'd be less.
I just like to add too that we definitely haven't asked for wireless microphone systems and we now have two. And we're super excited and we can't have a town meeting. So just put that on the record that we finally got microphones that are, you know, wireless microphones, no more tape on the floor, and now we can't have town meetings. So the timing is just perfect. But we will definitely be using them at our budget meeting and they are fantastic. And I think that everybody will be able to hear us.
Can you hear Dexter Lee out there somewhere jumping up and down happy? He's been asking for years, so I'm glad that that was able to be done. Um it's very, you know, it make a, a huge difference for many things, promotions and town meetings and when we can have them and uh even these meetings here, because you know, some of us are not as loud voiced as others on every voice we need to hear. Uh so uh do we know, need an actual motion on that or just?
I think, yes, well, not I think, yes, please and thank you.
Okay, so may I have, um, uh I've got Carrie. Uh maybe we have a motion on uh setting our regular meeting at an earlier time of five o'clock on February the twenty-third and then following it with the annual budget meeting at six o'clock, both be held in our school gym under COVID guidelines.
So moved.
Second.
So it was Marissa Rosinsky making the motion and Emmy Sawyer seconding. All in favor, say aye. Richard Davis?
Aye.
Emmy Sawyer?
Aye.
Marissa Rosinsky?
Aye.
Tammy Tripler?
Aye.
All votes cast in favor, the meeting will be set for February the twenty-third, regular school board meeting at five, followed by the annual budget meeting at six.
And just in case anyone is watching, we will use the gym door as the only access point. So if you talk to anybody, please remind them that we will not be going through the school hallway where our students are. We will only be using the gymnasium.
Thank you.
Okay, did everybody remember to sign the voucher for tonight?
Yes.
If you haven't, please do so. Uh and then uh if there are no future, I skipped ahead. Um is there future agenda items for next month?
Um if I, I, whether or not it's next month, but we've been talking um with the board um about, you know, the possibility of strategic planning for the building um and looking at enrollment where we're gonna be ten years out. Um you know, it's, it's, it's a great building, it's in great shape, but I think this is an opportunity to look at needs, short-term, midterm, and long-term. And I think, you know, through a workshop process, whatever the board would like to do, I don't think it has to be spend a, I don't think you have to spend a lot of money to do this. I think it can be done with the personnel we have. And I just think having a plan, a plan that the board can review annually and um just use it to guide it to work. I think that's important, you know, when we have um uh potential new board members that may come on board or, or personnel. Let's the community know that we've, we've got a plan, we got a vision. So um I would like if the board's interested in doing that to talk about that uh process and what that could look like. Um so I, I just wanted to throw that out there as well that um, you know, it's, it's on our radar and I think it would help steer us in some of the things we've talked about tonight and future projects as well.
That, that covered other business as well, which I had jumped ahead. I was like, I was so excited that we got our budget. Kind of jumped out of order there. Uh so we do have the, the meeting set for next month. Um you know, the vouchers are being signed. Uh is there anything else that anyone has to address?
I would just add that at this point, we don't have an update for the eighth grade um class trips because things have gotten harder, not easier in terms of travel and those um travel restrictions are changing daily. But Michelle um has been speaking with students and we will bring an update when there is one for the board. Um we will also be bringing an update for our current freshmen. Um we do need to make a plan for them, which again, there is no set plan. I just want to remind the board that we had discussed possibly an April trip if the students had wanted to take that this April. I think again, we have to pull together those students and families and talk to them about where we're at. But just so you know, the flights that were purchased are good and under reserve until December of twenty-twenty-one so that we can change that flight without any significant costs and still provide a trip for that group. And that's what they had asked us to do. So again, just talking about our current ninth graders and what we had set for a plan, they still have a plan, they still have options and their funds are set aside from the current funds for our current eighth graders. So when we provide you an update, it will be for both groups um because we are trying to accommodate two years' worth of eighth grade class trips rather than just one. So dad, Richard, I know, that's like he's got that hard, you know, place to be in, but thanks for the patience again to everybody for understanding that this isn't easy and our goal one hundred percent is to make sure our students have an amazing opportunity. And even if it can't be right away, um I think that they can still look forward to something coming their way. And I think that's a good place for them to keep their head, right, is look for the future and we will do our best to make it an amazing experience.
I'm so thankful that there, they have that availability of pushing that timeline back. Um hope, it was really hopeful that it was gonna be in April, but if that doesn't happen, at least they have until December to try to make those plans happen and whatever winds up happening for them, we are so proud of our ninth graders and our eighth graders that are currently struggling in this really tough time. And we will just keep them going forward and staying strong. Um is there any other business or comments that, from the board?
Not here.
I had one, one question asked me um to do with Paul and the bus and it was like two separate runs. And I was wondering, is there not enough room to spread them all out and that why we have to make two runs?
That's a great question. I actually probably should have put that in my um principal's report. That's a big one. Um so we're trying to do something different. So our other schools that were larger decided that uh what they did was they offered it basically a first come, first served basis. You sign up for the bus every single day, your child had a spot. There was no option to sign up for part-time. You know, you can't jump on or jump off what you want. So the other schools had students uh or families sign up that they needed the bus and they really stressed that if you don't need the bus and you can provide transportation, please do not request a spot on the bus because there's not enough space. When we had the seventy-two passenger bus or seventy-seven, forgetting now which one it was, the Tremont bus, I'm gonna call it. Um we were able to fit all of our families that wanted to ride the bus and rode it pretty consistently, knowing that there were some in October, we had said, can you send a note if your child wouldn't be riding the bus? But we didn't not save a seat for them. It was still saved and we had some of our families of three tripling in a seat because you can do that on a bus. But when we went down to our smaller bus, we knew that was gonna be a problem. Um basically, I'll break it down. We have sixteen families and nine seats available on the bus if we're gonna provide physical distancing. So we would need those families to truly not sign up for a morning or afternoon run because when the bus goes in the morning and leaves in the afternoon, the students have the same assigned seats so that we're not crossing any germs and changing those seats. And Paul does clean the bus at the end of the day, so anything that he can get out, he does. Um but with windows open and spacing, so you've got one seat, empty seat, so child, empty, empty in front, child. And then empty, empty, child. You're spacing it out and there's eighteen total seats on our bus. So truthfully, we can only fit nine and one of those cannot be behind our bus driver. Um so you have to think about like a zigzag. So for us with our sixteen families, unless we chose to say, you have to make the choice, there is no option for you to ride the bus, then we do need to do the two runs. But it is difficult, it's not easy and we make, we might have to get to that point. But kids that like to ride the bus, they like to ride the bus because it is still fun and it's exciting and it, I have a hard time saying to families and kids, you won't have that option. Um but if we have to get to that point, we also now have two school vans and I could staff those vans and we could drop off kids. So we're doing it as a test run. We did it for last week and this week, um trying the two runs. The kids that are there in the morning um are about the same time that they've normally been there in the morning. I think in the morning, it's about an eight minutes difference. For those that ride the bus in the morning, they get dropped off. It's about eight minutes for the second group to get dropped off, so it's not a huge difference. And in the afternoon, we're dismissing at two-fifty, we start loading the bus, so it pulls out by two-fifty-five. And the bus has been back around three oh five um for the second route. Um and before we were dismissing around two-fifty-five, getting everybody off on the bus at three o'clock. So the difference is really five to eight minutes for those that are um staying. And kids are finding definitely plenty of ways to keep busy. Um you know, especially those that need a little extra organizational help at the end of the day. It's nice to send half of my class off. As a teacher's perspective, I'm like, half of you, I'm gonna get packed up and ready and I know you have everything you need. And the other half are gonna keep going and keep learning and then I'm gonna just focus on you getting packed up and ready to go. And then, you know, there's a part of that morning and afternoon that is challenging to make sure everybody has what they need for school in the morning and doesn't need to call their parents five times to bring things in. And at the end of the day, they're taking home everything they need. So it's again, it's a pro-con way out, but I think if we can do the two runs successfully with a five to eight minute window, I think we should do it so that kids all have an option of getting on the bus.
With Crystal, I want to thank you for, think, uh I just wanted to say thank you for coordinating with Paul and um, you know, finding creative solutions for a difficult problem. Does that answer your questions, Richie, or?
Yeah, that one. And the other one was just um when we were shut down like, and I guess it would be with other ones like Sue as well as Paul, did they just not get a check for the two weeks that we were out or did they, did they get something or how, how did that work?
So they were offered their hours. Um so if they wanted to work their hours, they were offered those hours. It might have looked a little bit different. So Sue definitely helped out around the school when she wasn't packing lunches, but she also used it for like her inventory. Um she did a lot of her paperwork during that time. She actually did a nice deep clean of the kitchen during that time, just as an example. Um and then anybody else who was hourly that goes to all of our support staff, so secretaries, ed techs, bus drivers, um if they wanted to work their hours, there was plenty of work offered to them. If they chose to not work their hours, they had to make the choice of were they taking a medical day because they had doctor's appointments? Um or were they just not getting paid? So it was available to them if they wanted the hours, but it might have looked a little bit different in terms of what they did with those hours.
That, that is the approach we used across the entire district. You know, we're really proud that we were able to keep people um working, but it might have looked a little different, but it's exactly what Crystal described. Um you know, no one was, was paid. Um no one was compensated unless they put in hours or, or worked.
Yeah, okay.
And I guess.
Someone asked me, so I was, and I was like, I don't know.
Crystal, that's a great question. And I just think I should add one more thing that I, I didn't say at the beginning, so I'm sorry to add this to the end, but you brought up good points that made me think of something different. The next conversation, we'll probably have more conversations around our early release proposal. Um that hasn't started yet. It will start in February. I had sent home notices to all of our families two weeks ago. I sent it out again during remote, the second week. I sent another announcement again today out to families, just reminding them our calendar has changed. You haven't felt it yet because we were in remote learning, so the half-day didn't impact you yet. Um but we did meet as a staff for almost three hours uh yesterday. And we tried to get creative that we do need to follow an early release because there is district-wide meetings that we need to participate in, especially due to these COVID times. Um there are RTI services that are hard to implement during these COVID times. And so our students that need that response to intervention, we need time as staff to meet together, to plan and coordinate the kids' programming. But we also need time for these kids to receive these services. And with the schedule and trying to keep people physically distanced, it's not as easy to do that. So um with report cards, this is the notice I sent home to families today, with their report cards, it'll go home at the end of the week, there will be a letter. And if your child needs things such as social emotional support, speech services, OT, um intervention support, enrichment support, so they need, you know, that extra rigor or that extra challenge. Um we're gonna provide a supported study hall that Raylene and Nabora will run and we'll be pulling from the classroom teachers and all of our specialists as well to provide really deep intervention work. For some, it's just they can never complete homework, right? But that's a problem because they fall farther and farther behind. For some, we need to give them extra challenge because they're ready for geometry topics that we just can't get to in the classroom because we're already teaching five math groups, right? So that one additional piece we just can't get to. So it's, it's all of the spectrums. And for those who don't actually um really fall within those areas, if families need support, you're gonna receive a checklist of what are some things we could offer your child because you don't need a supportive study hall, you don't need intervention. Could we offer a chess club? Could we offer a snowshoe adventure? Could we do something still? So even though school is released at twelve-thirty, from twelve-thirty to two, we're trying to provide some kind of outlets for our students to still get what we can't offer right now with after-school. Um because additionally, wearing those masks for that much longer is intriguing for our kids. Um but they are interested possibly in wearing those masks a little bit longer from twelve-thirty to two, um if they can do some of those fun um things, maybe a tech club or, you know, winter soccer. We'll see what. Maybe a tech club or, you know, winter soccer. We'll see what those are, but there will be a checklist to give us a better idea of those kids that are going home at twelve thirty, are there things that they would like to do at the school that we could offer? And then we just need to find bodies of adults to do it, which is always a check. Um, so, uh, you might get that question from the community prior to next board meeting, but my hope is that I will actually introduce and discuss that further with you in February because we'll actually have it rolling. Right now, we're just trying to figure it all out.
Yeah.
I just think it's so essential for teachers and staff to have that. I'm so glad that we were able to vote that in because, um, this has been a trying year and everyone's, all the staff is trying to jump through hoops to create all these things without any time to actually plan and, you know, share with each other. And I just, I just think it's going to be a, a big change and hopefully, uh, a little stress relieving for the staff and create opportunities for the kids as well. Um, so did Richie, you have any other comments or?
No, that was it.
Um, any of the other board members have any comments? Mark, Nancy or Crystal? Okay, uh, if we are all set, um, then I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn from someone.
All moved.
Second.
Marissa Rosinsky made a motion to, to adjourn at, uh, seven sixteen. Emmy Sawyer seconded. Um, going to do a roll call, even if you've already voted. Uh, Richie Davis?
Yeah.
Emmy Sawyer?
Yes.
Marissa Rosinsky?
Yes.
And Tammy Tripler, yes, the motion is adjourned and see you in February.